This being its all its own. Let's go.
Ms. Tappan?
Here.
Mr. Bradford?
Here.
Mr. Darius Green?
Here.
Mr. Howard Long?
Here.
Here, on present to Mr. Darius Green.
Welcome to the meeting of the Mayor and Board of directors. I'm gonna ask if you stand, I'm gonna draft Dr. David Campbell. You're gonna lead us in prayer, please. Tell me, lead us in prayer, please. Dr. Campbell? The other?
The other. Let us pray. He taught and followed our God, to give him every good and every perfect gift. We thank you for bringing us back together tonight. We actually blessing upon this council, the mayor, and all those present. And we pray that what we do tonight will be pleasing in their sight. We actually unit to tonight, we actually leadership and guidance. If you lead us, we'll be led right, you guide us, we'll be guided right. Bless us and keep us, in the name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Church, salute, pray. Holy Saint, the blood, the content, the name of the Lord. And to remember, oh which is stands, one nation, under God, in his beautiful, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you for joining us this evening. Uh, let us just take a moment, a few moments, and bow our head. And remember us well, Dr. Charles McDonald, who's public servant for many years, and known as the father of the POPS program. So there are many, many children who then have lived from what he did while he was a little figure. Thank you. I have just a few announcements that I would like to make. And one of which, we have a focus group. Excuse me? Oh, the microphone.
Can you hear me? Thank you for bearing that to my attention. I could give myself extremely ill. Stop the violence, that is gonna have to be an ongoing effort. That we have to continue to work towards eliminating violence in our communities, to make them a safer place. And I have a group that offered themselves to join us in this effort. Because we don't wanna just do something when something happens, we want to continue it, to educate our, our community, work with our children. I've already spoken with the school system, how we can infiltrate and be a part of that. But for now, I would like to acknowledge the group, and if they will come and just stay, when I call your name, and I'll acknowledge them.
Got a phone call one day, actually a phone call and a visitor, from Mr. James Quarrel. And he asked me, what can I do as a citizen to help make a difference? I said, you know what, I'm looking at the, the chair. So he agreed to become the chair, if he will come, Mr. James Quarrel will just stay, and we'll take a group picture. He chaired the group, we initiated this effort during the month of June. And we launched it during the Juneteenth celebration, went to all of the parks that were having our formal programs. And we provided materials. And Mr. Quarrel, I do appreciate everything that you did, because he called everybody, which relieved my office from having to track everybody down. Thank you for chairing that committee, and I want you to stay with us, because we want this to be an ongoing process, so stay here. Also Reverend, uh, Dr. David Campbell, you were part of that group. Thank you for being a committed member, and for committing to, uh, continue. Reverend Moselle Smith? You notice I use the phrase, "back together," when we work towards a common goal, all of them in the same direction, on the same page. We can make a difference, thank you for being a committed member. Marvin Slater? Carlos Haines? And I accept it, and I'm gonna call this gentleman's name anyway. Uh, Reverend Johnny Green's certificate will be Chief Reed. You're gonna come up here anyway, I don't have a certificate since this is a new job description. Okay, and Mr. Ivory Smith, who was unable to be with us, is there anyone here, can I accept it? Uh, okay. Thank you, gentlemen, it means so much to us. Tell us how you want us to be assembled, so you can get a group shot. Thank you.
Community-wide cleanup. We had planned a short meeting, but I got called in between events. But we are going to, uh, on October thirteenth and fourteenth, we're going to do a community-wide cleanup. So we need your support. As we launch this, I know this is occurring on the same date that Keep More House Beautiful is doing theirs, but you all are picking up different things than we are. We're looking at the litter. We're also looking at signage to put in every district, and in main, uh, thoroughways. So if you have any ideas, feel free to call me, what we need to put on that signage. I was thinking today, when I was driving back here, from the other event, something on that sign that says, "You can call and be anonymous to report if you see someone throwing litter out." It's gonna take all of us to do that. As we near completion of our parks, which beautiful work that they're doing, we really want all of our neighborhoods to look well. So that is the next effort that we're having. Mr. Green, who is, uh, DeeDee Green, who is a member of Top of the Boot. Anybody here from Top of the Boot? But the group has committed to join forces with us on those two days, to help us with this plan. We will be putting more information out, in terms of the plan that we're going to execute coming up to those days. So far, we have agreed, we're gonna start at the municipal center. And as you give us information about your districts, the hotspots that really need some attention, then we can work from all points beyond. So I ask for volunteers and your support as we work, to get our community the way we want it to be. Okay, the HVAC system. I have been working diligently on that. I have talked with the engineers, I've talked with all of our legislators, that this is a disaster of epic proportion. The first, um, information we received, when I submitted an application, it was two, two million dollars. But the cost is ever-changing, and we had something happen, lightning struck the building, then we had a rainstorm. Put our servants down in the month of June, twice. And after that, we really noticed that something bad had happened with our HVAC system. So the last estimate is three point six million dollars. And that quote is good for only four months. So I am working daily, seeking every avenue that I possibly can, to get some help with getting that done. I will say that we, we have a temporary plan of action, just in case, because as I appreciate with the information that has been provided to me, it will take forty weeks to order this system, so we've gotta work quickly to get an order placed, so we won't end up in a bad situation next summer, with the heat index having been the way it has been. I believe, uh, those are my announcements, are there any announcements from the districts? Any update, Ms. Tappan, on COVID?
Um, the numbers are continuing to rise, um, we're not seeing a whole lot of people in the hospital with it, but they are presenting to the emergency room and being treated at home. So let's just be cautious, anybody with, um, and, and in your compromised conditions, please put your mask on and protect yourself, and you think.
Thank you, Ms. Tappan. We will get the building sprayed as we enter into flu season, because we know we have a lot of in and out traffic. Public comments, as they relate to items on the agenda. Any public comments? Okay, covered announcements. I'd like to recognize, and she comes, she's on my agenda, Ms. Latito Hutchison, she's with the community involvement in the litter abatement. And I asked her if she would come and, and just talk to us a little bit about how you organize, and give us some tips, and how we can coordinate. We're not trying to steal your job, because we really don't have nowhere to take old refrigerators and stuff like that. And while you there, let me acknowledge that Ms. Latito Hutchison was recognized as a young professional under forty recently. And I have nominated her as an everyday hero for Louisiana, Keep Louisiana Beautiful. Also, I'd like to recognize Devin Jones, our city attorney, he was also recognized as a young professional under forty, recently at a program at the Civic Center. And I would love to see our community develop a program, such as that, I've already spoken to Ms. Hutchison about it, I'm gonna meet with Ms. Dorothy Ford, because we do need to provide incentives to keep our young people here. And I thought that was a very nice program, and I was so proud of each of you, and the recognition that you received. Okay, Ms. Hutchison, you wanna talk to us about your program, and how we can coordinate?
Yes, so first of all, I say thank you, uh, Mayor Aldo, for the recognition of the Top Twenty Under Forty, and for the nomination of the Everyday Hero Award. That award, now after she called and asked, you know, for a bunch of stuff, I didn't know what she was nominating for. Then afterwards, she told me, and I looked it up, and that award, uh, is sponsored by Keep Louisiana Beautiful. But really, they asked for a lot of information, just generally speaking, about engagement in the community. And it wasn't all about litter abatement, it was all about, what are you doing, you know, what boards are you on, what committees are you on? Yes, what you, what are you doing with your Keep Louisiana Beautiful affiliate, which is Keep More House Beautiful, but just everything that you're doing in the community. And so it was interesting. Similar to that Top Twenty Under Forty, there were eighty-eight of us, you know, in northeast Louisiana, that were nominated by our jobs, and our churches, and our family members. But it was good to see all these young professionals, all over North Louisiana, northeast Louisiana, that are simply doing what they consider to be their part. And I think that's, you know, my message for you today, when Mayor Aldo asks, you know, what are you doing, and how are you doing it? My answer is, I'm simply doing what I feel like God has put on my heart to do, what is my piece, what is my part in the community. My part might be a little bit more than somebody else's, because that's just my personality, and that's what he put for me to do. But the encouragement for everybody is to just, for all of us to just figure out, what is that thing, what is our strength, and act in it. And encourage others to do the same, right? With our Keep Louisiana Beautiful affiliate here locally, I'm a member of Keep More House Beautiful. Would you ladies, uh, Keep More House Beautiful, would you mind standing? I know we've asked several meetings, would you stand? Thank you all. And so, yeah, ladies and gentlemen. Our committee has grown. You see four, with me five ladies in here today, but it's about, what, think about fifteen, uh, to twenty of us? Fifteen to sixteen of us that come to that meeting, uh, monthly, a diverse group, black, white, men, women, younger, older, that come to that meeting to figure out, what can we do to help improve our community? We talk about litter, we talk about code enforcement, we talk about, uh, the light and all those things, but we also just have a good news report that we give us every month. On, hey, Lee City Drug is coming in, or this new business is coming to town. Because everybody in that group wants to know the good things that are happening, wants to share the good things that are happening. And they wanna figure out, what is my piece personally, and what can I do through this group? And so, we have some things, you know, coming up. We typically sponsor two community cleanups, or two events per year, a spring and a fall. And so on October fourteenth, we'll have some volunteers, uh, come out with us to Bussin Break, and we'll clean up around that area. We're also sponsoring, uh, the Free Dumpster Day, that same weekend. But similar to what Mayor Aldo said, it's, it's no competition, this is a work for everybody to do, right? So, you know, if Top of the Boot is gonna come in, they have a big group, a lot of volunteers, they do a lot of community engagement. And so, they host something that weekend, we'll host something that weekend. We have other members who are thinking of, okay, how can we get the churches involved, maybe to adopt the street? Or how can we get businesses involved, to just commit to keep their business clean? So it's not a one-person job, isn't everybody's job. It's not a one-person problem, it's an everybody's problem, so it has to be an everybody solution. So that, that's really my message for today, is just to thank all of you, everyone in this room. The fact that you come to city council meetings, uh, this is an investment of your time, it says to me that you are probably all everyday heroes, right? I see some in the room, looking at my public works, everyday heroes are in this room. And so I thank all of you, and I'm privileged to be, uh, amongst all of you. And I just wanna encourage each one of us to, like I say, what, what I do with my organization, More House Community Development, is try to be that, um, it's, we have a new nonprofit, but the goal is to be a connector, to help people say, okay, you wanna do this thing? Well, I heard this thing over here needs some help, so let me put you two together, right? That's my thing, I'm a good connector. But you have a thing, and you have a thing, I think if we all just find our peace and do that, then we'll, we'll all win. We'll all change the world, and we'll definitely make a big impact and change the city of Massacre. So thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, Ms. Hutchison.
Okay, that brings us to item number five, approve previous minutes, regular meeting, August the tenth, and special meeting, August seventeenth, and August the thirtieth, twenty, twenty-three, I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes from August eighth, and August...
What's the name?
Okay. I have, yeah, this one, on the minutes, August eighth, August tenth, and August seventeenth, and August thirtieth.
I see ten, seventeen, and thirty.
We have minutes. We have eight, in the minutes, August eighth and August...
It, I think it was really, um, supposed to have been the eight, the minute says the eight, which is on Monday, we did have it.
Okay, so we need to make a correction?
It's on the agenda, yes ma'am.
Okay.
Comment on the, on the August, the tenth. That there stood in the minutes that I voted for the attorney, and that it was another, I was, I was the only one to vote no. On that, in the minutes you read that it got everyone, everyone, none of them voted for, for the attorney. I'd like to take that record that showed that I voted no. And also, that same night, uh, the citizens, Mr. Green, they have them scheduled to vote no, and I also voted no as well. That's the August, the tenth. Uh, I'm sorry, DeeDee Green, oh, sorry. DeeDee Green voted no, and I voted no. They only, they only shown in the minute that DeeDee Green voted no. I just wanna be assertive in that, Mr. Bradford.
All right, uh, Ms. Gordon, you made a note of that.
Yes ma'am.
We always go back and we check the minutes, and don't check the, it's duly noted. Mr. Bradford? Okay, I think we had a motion from Mrs. Tappan, and a second, we had some discussion from Mr. Bradford, and the second down there from, from Mr. Locke. All in favor? Any opposed, motion changed? Okay, consideration, item number six, consideration of reports of committees appointed of the governing body, A, Finance Committee Report. Review the deals and claims. Okay?
Kevin, do we want to make some, uh, recommendations for the finance? Do we do it at this time, or do we do it later?
If you wanna make some rec- You can make the recommendation, the Finance Committee's resolution will pass up to this board.
Okay, what, what is the discussion, Mr. Locke?
We saw some, uh, we saw some, uh, we saw some bills that, still can't hear it? We saw some bills that were paid, but I think they were exorbitant from our point of view. I was always under impression that certain bills over a certain amount had to come before the board to be paid. We saw some, uh, auto bills, acquisition bills of, of those.
How do we? So are you saying that before we actually pay the bill, uh, to prove it? Or you want us to get an approval before we get the work done?
I think our concern is that, um, one of them was like almost ten thousand dollars. If something is above five thousand dollars, we probably need to get more than one estimate. Before we, um, pay for that.
So you want to get an estimate for anything over five thousand?
Not insurance.
No, not insurance.
Not insurance.
As far as, you know, maintenance.
Any bill that's over five thousand, you want us to get your approval first, or maybe?
It's due within.
We're gonna do maintenance, right?
Maintenance.
Mr. Jones, you wanna weigh in on that?
No. I think with that, this is, you do have the bid law, that exists on top. And I know some of those things are bid out, like we had, we had a vehicle that was, needed to be repaired, it was, it was actually bid out. And we just, I just actually discussed that prior to this meeting, with the chief about that. And, and there was an issue about the bill, and, uh, that was bid out. So there is a certain level in service that you get over, that you have to, that you'll have to bid out. And I can look and see what the threshold is for that. But if you were inquiring about it in the financial committee, you can make a report that you, uh, that you wanna inquire about, was this pursuant to a bid? Or how was this, in acquiring that matter?
We can do that.
Correct.
Okay.
And then you would produce that report, and during this time, you'd have a report from the financial committee, the report is, is that, uh, they passed up a resolution asking to inquire to the board, was this, was this a, a bid, was this, however this was, uh, in allowance of that claim?
Okay, there's a question, we need to ask Ted Aldo, if we have bids on those particular items?
Correct, is, is it consistent with the bid law?
And if it's, and if it's not, it's not pertaining to the bid law. If it's over five thousand dollars, if it's dealing with heating there, could we just get two estimates, instead of just going out, just getting the first person? If you get two or three estimates, then the city will be, you can see the discrepancy, one is way overcharging. So you get two or three estimates, and go with the-
Follow the bid.
Follow the bid.
Correct. And that's a resolution that you could proffer in the, in the budget committee, say, hey, we, we proffer, just like with planning and zoning, they come to us, they say, hey, we made a, we made a resolution, we'd ask that y'all try and adopt this, to take some action, and the board to adopt something, to formalize something like that.
That's on, that's on the main, is that correct?
Yeah, just on main.
Just on main, okay.
And so when you give that report, just like with planning and zoning, they can give a report to the board, and the board can take no action on it. Same similar instance, it brings it to the forefront of it to exist, and then from there, this, this board of councilmen can take action on that.
Thank you.
Your word.
Okay, um, the plans, all the native reports, Ms. Rogers?
Yes ma'am, thank you, Mayor. The planning and zoning had one special use permit, which required us to go down. The business is called Bite Size, it's on South Washington, and it's a little restaurant with like burgers and things like that. If you go out South Washington, it's a little red building, if you're going south, it's on the left. And we approved that, he's going to put siding down to the ground on that. He's also says he's going to, uh, build a pavilion outside, like for people to sit under and eat later on. But right now, it's just carryout, you go pick up your stuff and you carry it out with you. So we approved that. The ones that were approved by right, there was a hair salon, fourteen seventeen North Washington, that was approved. Mogul Homes at three thirteen Dewing, three fifteen Dewing, and five twelve Van Frank. Those were also approved, the light side- Are lawn care, there's no storefront, it's just phone only. A guy that does lawn care, and you call him, and he goes out and do your yard, or your business, or whatever you need him to do. Nikway Auto, which is online sales only. And then the last one was Online Fix Man, it's online, uh, business only. You call him if you have repairs at your house, or shop, or carpentry, or ju- just general contracting like that, so that's approved.
Ms. Rogers?
Yes ma'am.
The last meeting, I requested, and you say you would, when you came back before the board. They, uh, the approve and disapprove, you told me you was gonna have a copy for me of this one.
We didn't have any that were not approved. We didn't have any that were denied. Yes, I did tell you that, but we didn't have any that were denied. We didn't have any that were denied. Yes, I did tell you that, but we didn't have any that were denied. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for your service.
Yes ma'am, thank you.
Uh item number seven, reports of city officials or employees required by law. Or by action of a governing body. Okay, do we have any um reports?
Mayor, I think that's where my legal.
Come on, um speak, Mr. Jones.
Sorry, at the previous meeting, I've been asked to look into things, one of which was to look into these sewer bonds. And possibly could we lower sewer rates? I reviewed the bonds and sewer bonds work in a way. They're your collateral, your sewer money that you take in is your collateral for those bonds, and those bonds is what we call non-diminishment of revenue clauses. If you diminish the revenue there or you lower the rate, then you violate the bond contract. Do both those bonds had it in there, that that you are not allowed to to diminish your revenue with those bonds. If you do, you subject yourself to default of bonds, so that is in both those bonds. So diminishing the sewer rates, not anything that you can do at this point without violating those bonds. And once you, once you do default on a bond, you have to get noticed to a legislative auditor.
So how long were we tied into that bond?
The length of the bond and indebtedness, it had to look at the contract, I didn't specifically review the length of them. But it's for whatever time that that debt service is out there related to that bond. And that's a pretty common provision with most of them, and the reason is is because it locks in their collateral. Uh these banks go out and they lend money based on that, that amount of sewer users and money that's taken in. They want some reassurance that it's just not gonna be diminished by the municipality. And so those are pretty common terms that exist in water sewer bonds, infrastructure bonds, anything that's related to sales tax will have that. Non-diminishing revenue uh language in there, and it existed in both of them as I reviewed. Uh as to the second item that I looked at, I had been contacted and asked to look at what we had. Approved in the budget for what it previously services rendered by an attorney to the municipal uh civil service board. And I've looked at that, what we budgeted and also received a correspondence what the bill was. And the two amounts are different, so. Ask is to give me some time so that I can speak with the records, I ought to see what the the budget is and what the bill was, cuz it was different than what we thought we were budgeting. And so I just asked for some more time so I can get some clarification on the amount that exists, and then I could report back to the board. The amount that that attorney was seeking reimbursement on.
Okay, right, it's vital that to get back with us on that because we need to figure out the discrepancy because.
The civil service board, they deserve representation also, if you're gonna be a volunteer on the board. You need some type of representation, so we need to get, we need to give them and get back with us so we can. Pay it as to what he charged us because the civil service board gotta remain neutral, independent. And therefore, if they got a problem, they need legal services cuz they volunteers. And they represent the interest of the citizens, so it's vital that we provide them legal assistance when they request it.
Correct, and hopefully by the next meeting, I'll be able to provide a number specifically to this board so that we can move forward with that. You're welcome, and the the last issue I had was I had uh been tasked to. Research with environmental court as far as the hearing officer and the. Amount of volume that had been going through environmental court, I was able to obtain the last. Four years' numbers of court cases, cuz that was easy to go to the dockets and find those. As far as court cases that, now to understand in environmental court, you're sent a you're sent a citation or or complaint. You have a amount of time to remedy it, if you object, then you go to environmental court. You don't make it to environmental court if you don't object. Uh if you, let's say you didn't grow, you didn't mow your grass, and we elected you didn't mow your grass. And then it was, you didn't object to the complaint, we either A, property was remediated. B, we remediated for you and placed what we call a grass lien down there in the tax assessor's office and one of your taxes were paid each year, that's paid first. Or you object and then you get to environmental court. The people of the complaints, the people objected, made it to environmental court, in twenty twenty, there was four cases, in twenty twenty one, there was five, twenty twenty two, there was five. And in twenty twenty three, there was two, those were of the complaints that made it to environmental court. The amount of complaints that existed for twenty twenty one, the only numbers I can get back to is whenever. Bubba had started it, or uh Mr. McDuffie, sorry, I call him Bubba, I've known him for a long time. July first to December thirty first twenty twenty one, there was fifteen cases of complaints. In the calendar year of twenty twenty two, there was one hundred and thirty three complaints that were dealt with. And in the calendar year of twenty twenty three, as of would been yesterday's date, there were a hundred and twenty nine cases that have been dealt with.
Okay, question.
Okay, Ms. Tappan?
Okay, you said the only cases that had made it this year is two cases, so if the person says. Okay, I'm gonna my yard, I'm cleaning up my yard. So when is it a follow-up done to make sure that that has been done?
So ideally, they have a set period of time to do it by. If it's not done and remediated by that point, then it's done by the contractor of the city or the city, most municipalities will end up contracting somebody to do this. And then, once they go out to do it, if it's not been done, then they do it, then the lien is placed on the property after that.
Is that for absentee?
Mr. Locke?
I'm sorry.
Mr. Locke?
An absentee owner?
Correct, so these cases are what we call in-rim cases, in-rim is just a fancy title for against the property, they're not actually against the, they're not against the person. Uh they're against the property, so they're called in-rim cases, which just means against the property. So the procedure is is that you look at the tax assessor's website, whoever is on the tax assessor's website for the address, that's where the certified notice is mailed out to. Whoever pays the taxes for that property is who is collected against, cuz it's actually against the property, not the person. So even in an absentee situation. That that bill would still be taken care of because it's against the property, not the actual absentee owner. It's called an in-rim action, a property action.
Okay, I got a question for you, I got a. Point your information for you. What's your def- when you say twenty twenty three, how many cases?
Twenty twenty three, I had, I was given the number of a hundred and twenty nine complaints.
Hundred twenty nine, two thousand twenty two?
A hundred and thirty three.
A hundred and thirty three, now what's your definition of dealt with? It's the difference between dealt with and resolved.
So I, the specific question that I asked, I'll give you specifically from the email, I specifically asked for. I originally asked for the tickets or the citations, I was informed that they don't consider them tickets or citations, they consider them complaints. And so that is the complaints dealt with, of those resolutions, I don't know the specific outcome of those resolutions. But I can try and get that defined and get it back to you, what the specific, who remediated, how many had liens, we can try and. Drill down to that number, to see of the proportion of the hundred and twenty some odd that were given, what percentage of them remediated themselves, what percentage of. Resulted in liens and what percentage of resulted in uh further action needed. And if I can drill down that number before the next meeting, I believe we can get that number drilled down to.
I mean, a hundred and twenty nine cases, complaints. Twenty twenty three. So, I mean, a hundred and twenty nine, you said it was dealt with, are we, when you say dealt with. What is the def- your def- you just told me was definition, did did the co enforcement officer, did he do go and just send a letter, I know that it make it to environmental court. Was the issue resolved before environmental court?
I don't have a specific answer.
Uh cuz I don't think it was.
When I'm using the term dealt with, I'm using a broad categorization of, it was a complaint that was that was actually fielded. And taken care of, I don't know the resolution outside of the number that would went to environmental court. I will try and find the ultimate resolution so I can give you percentages for each of those numbers each year to say, these were remediated by the owner, by the property. These were resulted in liens, which is ultimately which happens, whenever somebody doesn't take action, we have to take action. It results in a lien to the property. And then how many of those resulted in court, and those numbers should add up to give you a hundred percent of the cases, how they were dealt with.
Because you know, it's kinda confusing because it seems like it was, the problem were resolved, when you say a hundred and twenty nine, you say it was dealt with. But in actuality, there was a complaint, probably a letter filed, but there was no further action. It's still sitting in the to-do list, it's never made, it's the it's never, the job never, the task never been completed, the cycle never been completed. You still stuck in the first, well, in the first series of it.
And and thank you, and hopefully I will have a better definition of that, no doubt, dealt with is a nominative term, it's gonna be defined by its parts. And hopefully.
I was giving a little misleading, you know, if you say one twenty nine that was dealt with, some people, layperson don't really know how it go and think, well, that's resolved. The issue is not resolved, the process was started, but it's never completed, that's the problem that we having right now.
And hopefully we'll get a definition of, uh the better term should have been processed. Processed, and then we'll get a definition of what the ultimate in resolution was for these things, or where they are at in the.
Thank you, now by next week, out of a hundred and twenty nine, can you see how many of those issues were resolved?
The best of my ability to resolve it, to to see how many were processed and where the process came out.
I don't think it gonna take a long time.
Um I think for the next meeting, we need the procedure. Of handling um blight, also, I think we're gonna have to define and change the wording. And not just dealt with, but completed.
Is that just for? I'm sorry.
Mr. Bradford?
Is that for?
Mr. Bradford? And Ms. Ms. Lee, you have a copy of that information, or what did we do with that information on the process? Okay, and I had another copy prepared for your convenience on on procedures that's documented. And you can go to Municode as well, and this is just a synopsis of what we have, go ahead, Mr. Locke and Ms. Which is Mr. Bradford?
Is that the process?
That's right now, I I got it. Already looked at, looked at it.
Yeah, it was mailed in April.
Yes ma'am.
Twenty twenty three and Mr. Bradford in May of twenty twenty.
So already looked at that, that's where now say it completed.
Is that just uh overgrown areas are in debt for dilapidated house system?
Uh correct, Mr. Locke, that, what I use as a grass lien was just to explain, it encompasses all of code enforcement. In which is all codes related to your your blighted properties, your dilapidated, your overgrown grass, anything that's out of violation. Of what is considered or commonly referred to as your beautification or maintenance.
So all the, all these is originated in co enforcement to to Mr. McDuffie, these are the numbers you get coming through co enforcement, right?
Correct.
Uh Mr. Mr. Bradford?
You used a couple word, you used the term lien, and you also used accessory office, can you? I kinda missed that, when you, I I know, are you saying the city, that they don't take care of the situation where you put a lien on a tackle?
That, yes, councilman prefer, you can put a lien on there, if you do the work, then you can place a lien on that property. When the property taxes are paid each year. Your lien gets paid first, it's a, it's it's considered what we consider a super priority, it sits above the property taxes, it has to be paid off first. Before the taxes.
Okay, now, I'm standing, would that also mean something like adjudicated, that's before you adjudicate the property, is that correct? I mean, I think well, the property get adjudicated coming to the city, right, I mean, if we, but if we adjudicate. Uh how do, what would adjudicate property, just cuz we're talking about property, I'm gonna move into adjudication, what would adjudicate property? Is the city responsibility to clean up if it's inside the city?
Once a property is fully adjudicated, the title is then passed to the city and it becomes city property. At that point, just as any other city property, it's then the best interest of the city to have to to maintain it.
Okay, it's not the city property, need the city to have a responsibility of maintaining it.
Correct, well, so a lien doesn't make it adjudicated.
No, no, I'm standing, I'm standing, I moved from lien, I went to adjudicated because that's where the head wants to go in the lien, for instance, I look at some of the property here. Uh we go clean up the city for the instant, we go clean up uh location, we might, we might have two or three thousand dollar costs. The property ain't worth fifty dollars. I mean, and let's say, who gonna, they, let's say, let's go, they go adjudicate, you know, then we'll start with it, then we'll, they keep it maintained. Is that correct?
Correct, once you adjudicate, title passes to the city. And once it passes to the city, just like any other property, you're vested with maintaining.
Okay, one other question while we're talking about property, uh the parish have property adjudicated within the city limit of bachelor. More house parish have property adjudicated here, it's, give me some clarity, is is the city responsibility? To clean up all property even if adjudicated by the parish?
It's like, adjudication just simply transfers ownership, they're treated just like any other owner.
Okay, I I wanna, I wanna get a clip because, make sure I'm understanding it clearly. The the parish have adjudicated property. Inside the city limit, now charter say, we ought to maintain all property, the debris property in our city, inside the city limit. Okay, even though they have, can we, what can we do with the parish, they refuse to clean it up for instance, if they, cuz they have several. Judi- uh uh several adjudicated property, dilapidated property within the city limit. And we, we gotta come to some type of agreement with them or some some type of thing to get them to even, they do it, we do it, we build there, well. Where where do we go from there, you know, it's just in there.
And it is, it is a a confusing issue because they're they're treated as normal ordinary owners, and you could go through the ordinary process. But where you run into the issue is is forcing a government agency to pay you, and that's where the hairy issue gets. You can perform just as you would perform on a private owner. And put the lien down there, however, they're not paying taxes on a piece of property because they're not required to. And so as soon as you put the lien down there, there's no mechanism to force a government agency to pay, just as if. There was a lawsuit and there's no allocation of funds for that lawsuit to be paid, it just sits there unpaid.
It is, cuz we sent.
Mr. Green?
We sent them a letter when I was in code enforcement, we sent the parish a letter, and they sent it back to us, we sent it back to them. Send it back, say, don't send it back to us. So, so we, we tried, and I I spoke with. We had a conversation about it, I was saying, sometimes, we get, we get accused of some things that's not even ours. You know, when we go look and you pull up the record, say it don't even belong to the city, but it's inside the city limit, so we. We get the gist of it, but they get all the financial rewards when it's sold, but if it's unkept. Whoever district is in is gonna get, including America, and some, and most of the things that I went out on. Been called out on now in co enforcement, when I come back and I go to the computer, low and behold, it don't even belongs to the city. Belongs to the parish, I'm not telling, throw another government entity under the bus, but hey, it's inside, it is what it is. It's inside the city limits, and nobody's keeping it up, most of, about sixty percent. Of the property that you see, it's gonna have to belong to the city.
Now, in the instance of a sale, it'd be a transfer of title, in order to have claimed title, they would have to pay the lien off.
We can put a lien on the property, if the parish adjudicated and we clean it up, we can put a, it may not never get paid, but we can put a lien on the parish for the property.
Correct.
But okay, well, we we should definitely start doing that.
Uh who's next, Mr. Locke?
Mayor, that's gonna be a waste of resources, cuz if we go clean it up, we're not gonna get paid, I told you, when you sent the letter over there, they gonna send it right back to you. Then they're gonna send it back to you certified. So you, so they'll know that you got it, and then they'll tell you, hey, don't send us another letter.
Well, I think we get around that, uh. That we just go ahead and take care of our city, you know, we may, we may recover the cost in another way or another form, you know. But the thing is clean it up, cuz we got some dilapidated property within our city limit, it's ridiculous and adjudicated to the parish. Okay, I didn't check it and get it back out, that that may stay as well, we're talking about property again, we got a lot of adjudicated in the city, belongs to the city. We need to, I think the mayor won't address that with the, but anyway, we need, we need, we need to clean ours or two. Before we, before we go leaning on anybody else's property, no, we got responsible doing it too, I think we need to take the lien.
Question for Mr. Jones.
Uh Mr. uh Ms. Mrs. Tappan?
Um can we, can you talk to the attorney? Um, can we, can you talk to the attorney at the police?
I can reach out to the attorney. I have a good relationship with the attorney there. And and see if we can get some movement there and possibly get a working relationship going on with that. I will reach out to him. You're welcome. Thank you. And that concludes my report.
Okay. And also, Mr. Jones, if you would, that fine line of where, where using city-owned equipment to go on private property. As a fine line, breaking the law, they just use a phone. So we, we need clarity on that if you would.
And that is the case. And you do find it from municipality, municipality, a lot of times when it comes to this code enforcement mowings. A lot of places tend to contract it to somebody who submits the bill so that they can bill the time and everything. Because you do get the bill for your time. You do get to go for the cost of it. So they will oftentimes have a contract service that either, A, does the destruction of the blighted property, does the mowing. And then that person submits it.
After, after the lien is filed?
That's before the lien is filed. The lien is filed after the service is performed. Because then you have the bill that you can submit down there with the lien with the amount. Because the lien will have an amount in it.
Oh, okay.
And so a lot of municipalities do elect to outsource that with a, with a contract or a list of people, list. You can have a list kind of like a towing list. Hey, you're next on the line. Uh, this, these properties here all need to be done. And then they submit their bill, the city submits the, or the municipality submits the lien to the tax assessor's office in that manner.
Starts with the citation.
It starts, it starts with having to send the letter out to the registered owner at the tax assessor's registration. It's not actually specifically who's down there on the deed. It's who's registered at the tax assessor's.
Start with citation.
I, I wanted to get a, yeah, I wanted to get a clarity on, 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 I have a question. She said somebody using city equipment on private property.
Okay, that's what, that fine line of, because we do get a lot of calls and a lot of complaints about, um, other folks' property. And when you take city equipment and go on private property, you create a problem for the municipality, uh, in terms of.
You can, and one, and it makes an issue because the public sees you mowing a private yard. And and it, there's a, there is a, I've ran into the thought process that people say, well, I just want mowing my yard or let the city mow it. And and it runs into this private versus public venture of the constitution. And Louisiana specifically prohibits, and that's why you have cooperative endeavors. The other issue you tend to run into in that thing is is you don't know what's in these people's yard. You don't know what's happening. You don't know where a pipe is. You don't know where a sewer cleanout is. And you run over it. So a lot of times they like to outsource that activity to somebody who has the insurance that can cover it. And it keeps you clean hands. Because that's one thing you never think about around these houses. And it is very common. They'll have a sewer cleanout and you won't see it when the grass is high. You'll knock that thing straight over and you have a pretty big problem. So that is some, some thought in the process of using a, a list of private people who could do that service.
Narrow, a bit more comprehensive.
Correct. And there, there are, there are a list of, a list from other municipalities, what they've used. And you get into blighted property, you start taking it down. You start talking about houses that asbestos in it, asbestos pipes, things like that. That's costly remediation because of the health hazard that exists. So those are the things you kind of have to look at whenever you're looking at doing more extensive things with the beautification ordinances in the code. Is, is that there are those inherent risks that come with that that is probably a lot to bear for a city. In addition to the public seeing the city maintaining private property.
Okay.
Um, that brings us to, um, number eight, Ms. Goberic, action on ordinance and resolution introduced that previously. Got anything, Ms. Goberic? We'll move on to item number nine, other unfinished business. Do you have anything? Uh, number ten, introduction of and permitted action on proposed ordinance and resolutions. Anything that's going? Number eleven, other new business, A, is permission to advertise or RFQ for Morehouse Memorial Airport Engineer Master Agreement. Mr. Keltzer.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. So every five years, we're required by the FAA and state to have a engineering consultant of record. And they will handle all the projects that the FAA and the state are gonna fund for us during that five-year period. And so every five years, we have to put out requests, qualifications and essentially choose a new engineering consultant. And it doesn't necessarily have to be a new one, but, uh, even if our old consultant wants to submit their qualifications, they have to meet the standards. So we check them out every five years, make sure they're qualified, do the jobs that we need them to do. And, uh, once we select the one that best fits our needs, we'll come back and say, we found our area consultant. And we'd like to make them our consultant of record. And if you're not curious, they typically are funded through projects that the FAA and state fund for us. So it's not like we have more retainer, we don't pay them every month to do anything for us. They get paid when they do a project. And that's always, you know, through grants and such. So do you want to have any questions?
I met with, um, Lindsay from Congress, Julia Letlow's office. And and they are already looking at a preparation for twenty twenty-four. So we need to spend some time talking about how we can, um, benefit.
Yes, absolutely. That's actually my attempt next week for us to try to sit down with you and figure out what we need to do after.
Okay. Thank you. Any, were there any other questions for the airport?
Basically, we need permission to request, uh, appropriate qualifications.
Community Development Act nineteen seventy-four is amended, Ms. Goberic.
Mayor, this is a piece that we have to do every so many years. The L C E B G, this is a requirement that we keep a plan. And this is what they sent us to adopt. Uh, and this is in reference to the three streets that we just got awarded. This is part of that application to finish it. They require us to have one on file and send it to them. So we ask that y'all consider adopting this.
I will entertain a motion on resolution twenty-three twenty forty-eight.
I make a motion. Delete sub resolution twenty-three dash twenty forty-eight.
Properly moved and seconded. Are there any questions? Questions, uh, questions like the weakness, a lot.
Yeah, I, I'm kind of concerned about the residential anti-displacement and relocation system. Did somebody explain that to me, please?
Well, I think this is the plan that says if we're gonna do something and we're just gonna take somebody away from their house, what would the plan be? I don't know of a time since I've been here that we've done that.
That's what I'm trying to, that would take away someone from their house.
We, I've never known that to happen. But I guess this is the federal that's saying if you got a plan, this is what you're gonna do.
We're gonna be responsible for moving that person.
Right.
And assisting them in defining relocation.
I don't know of a time that somebody else made, I don't know of a time since I've been here that we have done that before. But this is a standard thing. And I checked that the last time we did it was in twenty-two and it's the same wording that they send, so.
All in favor?
Uh.
Can we get a seven?
Yes. Mr. Bradford, you said?
Yes.
All in favor? Any opposed? Motion can. Okay, that brings us down to item C, Mr. Ricky Allen Anderson, resolution twenty-three twenty forty-six. A, resolution twenty-two, uh, nineteen ninety-three fiscal, nineteen ninety-three fiscal year twenty-three twenty-four budget fiscal year budget twenty-two twenty-three.
Good evening, Ricky Anderson, Bachelor, Louisiana. I'm here to talk about the resolution twenty-two nineteen ninety-three. And the fiscal year for that will be twenty-two twenty-three. We also talk about resolution twenty-three twenty forty-six eight. Along with the fiscal year twenty-three twenty-four. Uh, let's go with twenty-two nineteen ninety-three. I'll be quick with this. And this was active on April fourth, twenty twenty-two, uh, by, uh, this board. Except, uh, Mr. Green, James Green and Mr. Charles Bradford, uh, Mr. Diddy Green voted, uh, no. Uh, Ms. Tappin was asked during that particular time, uh, the elect Larry Prater and former council member Robert Shaw. And Mr. Locke voted for that resolution. That's still in effect today because it's not been abolished. And that resolution was to give Mike to become in, which is the Morehouse Parish Sheriff Department, to patrol the city of Bachelor, Louisiana from six P M to six A M the following morning. This been going on for a year and a half now. We have paid close to eight hundred some thousand dollars. He never came up to bring this to the committee about what he has done and secured safety of this community. There was an attempt by this board to amend that, to bring that money, that was not into that budget for the resolution twenty-two nineteen ninety-three for the fiscal year twenty-two twenty-three. It failed. Let's move on to resolution twenty-three twenty-four six eight. Let me repeat myself. Resolution twenty-three dash twenty forty-six eight. You just passed this revolution last month. On August tenth, twenty twenty-three. I have a revolution right here. It was offered by Ms. Tappin. And the following people that voted for it was Ms. Tappin, Charles Bradford, Howard Locke and. You're in violation of the law. Let me close out by saying, the Justice Department Criminal Resource Manual, C R young, one oh nine, recall law. You are legislated by it. You make laws. You make orders. You don't corrupt laws that were broken. Laws was broken here. Mr. Diddy Green is not here. I can quote it. He got a, what, confirmation from the Attorney General Office that laws was broken here. He said it in a special meeting. It's at the regular meeting. And this board called up laws, criminal activity, recall. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm not trying to say you're criminals, but you're in violation of the laws. Good evening.
As far as that, a resolution does not require signature of the mayor. It's active upon the vote of the board. There is no signature requirement on a resolution because there is no ability for the executive department, which is the mayor, to veto it. And ordinance is different because when an ordinance is passed, the mayor has a certain amount of time to sign it or veto it. If it's not signed, then it's considered vetoed. But there is no ability to veto a resolution. And that's why there is no signature spot. It's effective upon the vote of the board.
Let me, let me ask a question. I'm concerned. Revolution twenty-two nineteen ninety-three, you see, you keep coming back at us. Uh, I think it's for your time and mine too before we came here. I would ask if you look into that. And I'd like to make a motion that our attorney, present attorney here today, look into that matter because he was kind of up in the air and, uh, it, it, it gonna affect us when we, when we ever decide to approve a twenty-one, twenty-two budget. Because I would like to make a motion that the attorney look into resolution twenty-three, I will, let me say it again, twenty-two nineteen ninety-three. Could you, I don't, that was before you became attorney. And if you can look into that and do some research because we need to get that behind us. We need to get our budget pad as well. We need some clarity on that resolution and get that budget pad up. Both of those are hanging out in the legislative offices. Legislative, Louisiana Legislature Office still have the hand over Baxter, you know. We, we still got some, some delays being established. I think we need to just look at it and inquire and look at it and see what we can roll with it.
And and actually, for clarity, I can review it for constitutional analysis and to see if it matches all the acts. And it's actually, and give a, give an opinion at the next meeting as to the legality of entering into that agreement, that resolution.
I'm second your motion.
Or we, did we have this on the agenda? So it needs to be an expansion of the agenda to do with.
I don't think you have to have a motion to do it. It's just to ask a legal, a legal. And I, and and with that task, I will perform the duty provided, just as I provided this.
I like, I like the mo, making motion to expand the agenda. The top of our tractor, purchase of a tractor, we just spoke about that. I get a, uh.
I second.
A motion discuss purchase of a tractor. And from what I know, a tractor company. I get a, oh, I get a second.
I second.
And so to be clear, it's, it's a motion to expand the gen, to discuss the purchase of a tractor. Okay. And then there'd be a public comment before we take a vote on to expand the agenda if there's any public comment. You would have to have a public comment before you take a vote on expanding the agenda for that specific item.
We have a motion on the floor. Was there a second?
I second.
There was a second?
I guess.
Okay.
Public comments.
Public comments?
Related to the expansion of the agenda.
Acquisition of tractors?
Yeah, he has, he has, he have, he, he will make a comment.
And and his, his commentary would be in relation to either expanding or not expanding the agenda.
I want, I want, what I need to do, to make a comment.
A public comment as it relates to.
To, as it relates to, should they expand the agenda or not expand the agenda?
Well, let's, uh, expand. My name is Mark Davis. I work for Leach and Andy Turner, that we're in Bachelor, Louisiana. And we're a tractor dealership in Bachelor.
What, what was your comment, sir?
Once it's expanded, then he can comment on the specific item. This, this commentary period is just limited to should they expand or not expand.
We're gonna expand it or what?
All in favor?
Anybody at home?
Now we have a commentary.
Do we have any public comment?
Oh, yeah? Oh, y'all fine?
Yes, I'm sorry. On the tractor, the company you work with.
Yes.
Anybody else, do you sell representative? Anybody else, do you have a representative here?
Yes, sir, I got, I got, I got.
Well, you can come through, because I'm, I'm, I think I made it clear, I don't know nothing about tractors, but I know we need our rad, because I'm digital in Bastrop.
Well, I got a guy I can tell you all about.
Okay, well, can you respond from there? About this particular tractor, let, let me kind of get an introduction here. I start, and I think, who's the Jake, who's the Jake back there? Could you come up?
I think, I think we're in public comment right now.
Oh, 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 okay.
Past public comment.
Yeah, I don't think I, I like to just say that they're here to present their proposal for their tractor thing, you know, that's big.
Okay, you want to, to make your presentation, sir?
Well, uh, yes, ma'am, thank you for the opportunity. Uh, I work with Leach and I have Mark and Mr. Gary Bice here, we represent a couple of manufacturers, Masterson Ferguson and Ten Tractor. We attended a meeting, uh, a couple of weeks ago and heard that there was, uh, an issue with the town, town tractor that they've gotten in from, or for. And it's some time passed nearly a year and, and couldn't get a, an answer on when the tractor might be available. So, we went to work in Indiana to try to find a tractor, and more, to provide a quote to the town for the, uh, the city use to, to maintain the roads and ditches and everything. So, what we found was a Masterson Ferguson, hundred-ten horse tractor with a twenty-two foot boom mower, with a fifty-inch cutting head, in one of our neighboring dealers in Georgia. And we presented a proposal, uh, for that unit. Uh, the unit is currently available in Georgia, and if it fits the, the need of the city, we just wanted to offer that proposal for your consideration to get the tractor, uh, transferred over here. The dealer that has the tractor has agreed to transfer it for us to be able to provide it to the city of Bastrop. And the pricing is in place and everything is there for it.
How, how many days would it take you that the city would agree to purchase this tractor? I, 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 what kind of timeframe before the tractor could get here to the city of Bastrop?
Depending on when the, the, uh, proposal would be signed by the city, if the tractor's still available, which it has up to date it is. Uh, and I'm not trying to push that issue, but the tractor has been set aside for us to be able to get. We could get a truck lined up and have the tractor picked up next week and have it brought back over here. We would do an inspection to make sure everything's ready to go. It is a brand new unit, but we always want to do what we call a P D I, pre-delivery inspection, to make sure the tractor's ready to go work. And then we would deliver it to the city of Bastrop. So, within a matter of a week, we could have it here, have the P D I done, and the tractor delivered. And late next week, I would say at this point.
Mr. Johnson, all, Mr. Old, you can cut, Mr. Old, uh, let's talk about specs. And, Mr. Johnson, I want you to talk about the, um, process and procedure and acquisition and.
That's what I got, was that would be delivered in December.
You got it from a company, you got it locally, you ordered from a local company?
Well, yeah, I did in the city, they, they order them on state contract, and I think, uh, Bayou Cabo is the, is the seller.
I have a question.
What is this, Tapping?
Um, the tractor that you're proposing, Bishop, is it on the state contract? Will we get those discounts?
Yeah, we get the state discount. I asked that question, I did, I'm gonna let him ask, he said it on the state.
Will we get the state discount?
What's the state discount?
Seventeen percent on the tractor, and, uh, more than just ten percent of the cost.
Is that comparable in stores?
It's not compared, the, the proposal he gave me today is at, is at around a hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars. And the proposal I have from Bayou is at sixty, sixty-six thousand.
Then with the boom?
Tractor boom and all.
Sixty what?
Sixty-six thousand, thereabout.
I would like to.
Wait, we just didn't know, we don't talk from now.
Can I, can I see that proposal, you're talking about the sixty-six thousand?
I don't have it with me.
Well, you need to bring it, you want to present it, because I don't think you get any tractor, I'm not a tractor, I'm not a tractor. I've been researching, it's hard to get that for sixty-six thousand, that's just a figure, that's almost like a three million dollar condition. Three hundred million dollar condition. Of course, you come to focus council, and you bring ridiculous prices.
Mr. Bradford, it is. To be admonished in a public meeting, it's not.
Okay, okay, I'm sorry, thank you.
Mr. Old?
Yes?
We said we've ordered those other two tractors already?
Correct, they were ordered before I came.
Yeah, the city, not, not.
Correct.
So, are we obligated to purchase those tractors?
Are we obligated? I, I mean, I don't know, I don't know what the contract fulfillment is, but I mean.
I don't want to get, get caught up by trying to buy another tractor and then you're already obligated to buy other tractors, and then where's all that money going to come from? That, that's the only question I'm asking, are we obligated to fulfill that contract? Not that you did, or the city has already done?
Since we didn't, since we didn't, since we didn't end the contract, I assume, I'm not, I'm not legal, but I assume that we're still obligated to, to purchase those tractors unless we, unless the city decides to pursue other avenue.
Because if you, when you bought the tractor, you had to outsource it to the boom, so if you tell them you're gonna buy a tractor and you purchase a tractor, then they send it to a third party, and then they put the boom on, and then you tell them, we don't want it?
Correct, you have a purchase order that has been issued to them.
That's what I'm getting at.
You can, you can, you can say it again?
Stop in the middle of a. A, a purchase order has been issued for those contracts.
The one right here?
Correct, the two that are outstanding. Purchase orders have been issued for those, they've acted on those purchase orders. We could be liable for having to buy those tractors or not to get rid of them or any damages that occur from the breach of that.
Pressure's on the thing. Uh, we, I want you to know, even start with you, but we have not received the tractor, they haven't met their delivery date. How are they gonna hold the law with to buy something they haven't delivered according to the contract? Uh, first of all, we need to see the paperwork, Ms. Goldman need to get us the paperwork. See, we can't keep kicking them, see, we, we get calls every day from our people down the community, the grass is high, this is high, and we've been doing this for a whole year. Back and forth, but those tractors might be ghosts for the concern, they're supposed to be delivered back in April of this year. Is that, I don't understand? He don't know. And don't nobody know, that, that Ms. Goldman has, and we can no, no, no longer continue conducting business like this, not taking care of our community. And we got, we got a dealer and a seller, people right here working the service, and we're talking about something we might get when Santa Claus come. Come, let's be real about this, we need, Ms. Goldman, do you have information, the paperwork?
I have the paperwork, yes.
You, you gotta see the price of what's going on, we got two tractors, it's on the road, I sure appreciate you, Ms. Goldman, thank you. If you have the paperwork, I should, we, we need to get this up, you know, we've been kicking this for six or seven months now.
I have something, Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
I'm on a request that he looks into the penalties, the contract.
And I can review it before the next meeting and tell you if there is a delivery date or not. And, and we'll look into what the provisions say about delivery and things like that.
Personally, I should tell you, you know, I have papers that ain't been delivered, you can't be responsible.
But if, uh, you said two hundred grand, it's, what was the price, a hundred and sixty? And you was gonna get two for one twenty?
For, actually, less than one twenty, yes.
I mean, you haven't seen the paperwork, you're making that statement, now you say you don't have the paperwork?
I saw what the, I saw what the bid prices were, yes, I have.
You have? Well, what, what, you, what, you have?
I didn't bring one, you know.
Can you get them?
Yeah, I will get them.
Go get them, bro.
And it's, it's not ridiculed. I want to talk a tone and kind of.
Well, 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 he, everybody got a tone. When, 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 when the lady called, the lady called, she had a tone, right? In our district.
And, and I.
Had a tone, you went out of this area, right?
And I think, Councilman Bradford, I can incorporate that into the analysis with the next meeting. If, if what the bids were, what the terms were, who was the bidder, and I can talk for that report to the board, that'll help out.
Thank you, Attorney, I appreciate every thought, it should have been brought here because they knew we were trying to get tractor discussed this last month. We come back again at next meeting in the October. Okay, unless we call especially the citizens in my dis- in my district, see me at the grocery store, call me at home about grass cutting.
But also when you get.
They, they do a lot like that, I mean, we can no longer, disrespect the citizens of this community.
And there's, there's also sitting on top of that, understand that acquisition of assets over a certain amount require public bidding. And so, you, you do get over that.
We, we understand that, but we need to, um, this is, it'll be delivered in five, six days, you know, once we decide to bid, this is where we want to go. This is a local company. Uh, they, they can give us service pass, so they can serve it all our tractor, we don't have a working tractor. I mean, they, they can pause any tractor in the United States. I mean, why are we dealing with someone out of, what, what, what is the contract, sir? What, what is the company, the tractors coming from?
Mud Rush.
Tractor from who?
From Mud Rush, from Bayou, Bayou Cabo.
Well, where did they get them from? You don't know that, they, they might. Okay, thank you, sir, thank you, sir, I like it, we're gonna wait, we, we're not gonna go back.
Okay, go here, Mr. Bradford.
I think the frustration is boiling over because the citizens are really upset about the grass. I mean, it's not your fault, I understand that it's an order, and I can understand the anguish because when you go places, you just keep telling them that it's gonna get done, and you go way back to March, and you would hate to go tell somebody in your district, hey, we're not gonna even vote none this year. So, I think what he was trying to do was just get a, get, get a local, get a tractor that they say could be in. I really was, that we got two on order, if we can get one right about that price, I was under the pressure, we just get three? Go ahead and get that one, maybe, because you can't counsel the others, that's gonna, you're gonna end up paying for them anyway. I was under the impression that, Mr. Bradford, he, he said the citizen wants something done A S A P, and they tired of people telling them, we're gonna get to it, we're gonna get around to it, we doing something. We always going to, physically to, about to, but nothing never gets done. But when came in and he said a hundred and sixty, you can get two, that you say you can get two for one twenty. Mr. Bradford, he's just saying that he just wanna see, and I believe you, you, you trust where you're honest, man, but he just won't, you know, your word is good, he wants to see the actual paperwork that says, and then I think he'll, he'll be satisfied. But I was under the pressure that we was going probably get three until, you know, the price was a hundred and sixty, and, you know, that's. It might violate the bid law, when you go a certain amount, you gotta bid it out.
Right.
But I was under the impression it was gonna be like sixty-five, seventy, or whatever, seventy-two. And you can just get it, because it's ground, but it's in the same oil park as the two that you order. But when you, like, triple the price of one, then that's kind of, you know. I can understand Mr. Bradford's point, Captain Bradford, the citizens are upset. If you don't believe me, just walk around and ask, they, they, they tired of we're, we're about to. So, I know it's something you say you can do, but we gotta come up with something, I know that's an astronomical price for a concern. You know, if you can get two for one twenty, and then one sixty, I mean, if you just basic economics when you, economic one on one, but something has gotta be, something's gotta be, something's gotta be done. I know it's mowing season is over, about to conclude because the fall is coming, the grass is dying off anyway. And to go pay one sixty at the end of mowing season, that's just, it's just not, not good economics. But, something that, I mean, this is, this is a complicated issue, because I, I understand, Mr. Bradford, and I feel his pain because I hear, I hear the citizens every day, and they are upset, they got a right to be, because that is, that is unacceptable to go a whole year without mowing, that's just the bottom line, no way around it. But we're in a predicament that we really can't do nothing about it right now.
Correct, we, I feel the same complaints, and, and I, I understand, I understand your frustration, but until they deliver the equipment, I'm mowing with it, with, with all I got, I got one tractor that runs ten percent of the time. One tractor's not gonna keep everything cut, we're gonna be pushed to keep it cut with two. But that's one of the reasons that we went to, to spray in our road ditches and our, and our, our waterways just trying to kick the grass down until we can, until we can do something, and we're cutting with everything we got, but weed eaters and, and, and small bush hoggers and mowers are not gonna cut your waterways on the backside of your ditches and your ditch marks and all that, I mean, it's, it takes specialized equipment, and I realize that they keep pushing us off, but.
Mr. Locke?
Yeah, I have, I have this proposal.
Is, is, are we comparing assets to assets?
That's, that's, yes, sir, I told him when I, when I looked at it, when I got it today, I sat down and looked at it to try to compare. And it is comparable equipment, but when you looked at the price that we bought that we. Issued the purchase order for, compared to what he has, is, I, I'm pretty sure, and I have to look back to see, I'm pretty sure you'll have to be bid out at that price.
Okay. I have a question. Do, uh, okay, we have one tractor, a piece of a tractor, uh, uh, do we have a tractor over there, can we get, uh, get to work on? We have, we have two tractors, we had, the tractors are not working, uh, well, over the year, can, can, can we get parts on them, or can they be fixed?
The ones, the ones in the past that they had, that, that, they're completely wore out, they're no good. We got the one, we got the one boom tractor, it runs ten percent of the time, the other tractor is in right, waiting on a part, and, and.
In right?
The last word, the last word we got from.
Okay, have you checked with the local company, see if they get it?
It's already there for them to repair, it was there when I came here.
You said, there, you came here?
It was in right when I came here, yes.
But what's the, what's the status, I mean, can we go?
The status is the, the. The status is the part for that tractor is not even in the United States, and I talked to the man three weeks ago.
Well, we might, when we get our tractor in, and, and put it.
It's not safe to operate.
Well, how do we get it back to Bastrop?
Sure they put it on the road like a target.
We might bring that home then. When we sell the rest of the stuff we got over there, uh, uh, junk, tractor and strap line, it'll go along with it, right? And we, maybe, maybe hippos buy something, you know, we, we, we gotta do something. If I, I'm, I'm frustrated, my community frustrated, and I think the mayor, she got it called to, and the lady will go frustrated, I will.
She had a message, very polite, it was there, there's a few expressions I've heard, Bradford. Actually, because she called, I, I did go, and, and I talked with her, and she was very polite, but she was frustrated, and, and, you know, there's, there's a difference. For people person frustration and not naming the animosity at you as a person. Okay, um.
We, we, we'd like to, we'd like to, we'd like to see those, uh, vehicles, those, those, those bids, whatever we got out there, you know, but we can go ahead and move forward because that, I was, I asked the portion, I'm saying portion, I'm, I was told, I was told, I'm, I say, after, after, you say after, after, I say, this is a competitive price with most companies, you know, around the state, you say this is a competitive price. I'm, I'm gonna use that sixty, that's why we try to gain it, because they ain't gonna build no tractor for sixty, especially because they have this particular tractor. to do no tractor for sixty, especially unless they have this particular tractor. It's a hundred and sixty nine. And, and, and they, they live in that same apple for sixty nine dollars. I mean, it's just sixty nine thousand dollars. That's why we give them. They may not even exist, you know. Might be another scam.
Keep us, keep us on track with bid law and how that's done. And, and I, I do know that it takes a long time to get, matter of fact, my car is shot. The keys are out of the park. The can that they're looking for.
I make a move, mayor, get a new car.
I want my car.
You go do a second.
Well, I want my car. But you're doing it in the midst of this. But we're waiting for Ms. Goldman to bring something. I think everybody has had an expression to, you wanted to say something under the expansion of the agenda?
We did make Mr. Jake this morning and gave him bid, and we have no idea what the spec looked like for the original bid. So, what we bid is what's available. And it is a hundred and ten horse cab tractor, it's a high quality tractor, and it's a, it's one of the better mowers on the market. But going forward, if there's a bid process, we would like to be included in that from the opportunity to, to comply with that and give you pricing. This tractor is available, and I say it's put together, ready to go in, in Georgia, and it's, it's a good piece. That's all.
All right. I want to say, um, look, okay, are you representing the company that?
Right, right here, I'm, I'm talking with the mowing business. We speaking on, what's going on here as the citizens are asking.
We need to, Mr. Johnson, what would be your guidance? We've had citizens' comments. You, you do not work for the company that, on which we did the expansion of the agenda?
But it's just a thought that go on everybody's mind.
Public comments at this point.
Okay, we, we're past the public comments, sir. Thank you, thank you. At this time, I'm going to entertain a roster of journalists meeting.
I make a motion.
Properly, move.
Second.
Answer, all in favor?
Aye.
And opposed, this meeting is adjourned.